Yeah. So, but I was just like that, but then we're reading. Okay. Yeah, so I'm just, you know, I mean, some of this one, I don't think it's. It's. Okay. 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 That was kind of my thing to, my thing to me. Yeah. Sort of like to say. Yeah. 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 Okay. 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 That was kind of my thing to, my thing to me. Yeah. Sort of like to say. Yeah. 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 Of course, like he wants that, right? Like it's beautiful, but I mean, he knows, it can be the whole, it doesn't matter whether it's this or something else. Yeah. And I mean, it was supposed to be really, or it was supposed to be. Yeah. Oh, I know. Yeah. Yes. That would've been nice. Yeah. I'd be like, oh, then I made it to me, but it's like, what? Yeah. Yeah. There you go. There you go. Yeah. Sorry. But I mean, that's. Yeah. 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 Like, listen, I can hear the shade ideally, if I don't want anything there, but I understand that this, it's not mine. It is not mine, and it's going to be sold. Yeah. So, and I mean, and I'm still, I'm still, I'll say, I don't know. So, maybe, and that's the other thing, too, is there's. So, yeah. Questions? Yeah. All right. Thank you. Yeah. 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 Something that's around four stories. Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah. Yeah. Well, I'm not, I'm not worried about us. Yeah. 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 I'll have a red light. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so that's going to turn, right? You said. Right? Again, so. You guys should be, I know you got the. If I were doing with me that. Yeah. 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 We appear to be ready? Yeah. Everybody ready? Mm-hmm. The board ready? Board looks ready? All right, let's go ahead and kick this off. Congratulations, everybody. Down, you want me to, my voice down or the mic down? The button? Yeah, the button's on, I'm green. Okay. Everybody hear me all right? We'll just move this over just a tick. Do that. There we go. Congratulations, everyone. This is our first meeting at our new town hall. Very excited. We're happy to be here. I know the staff is happy to be in this building, and I think all of our board members are very happy and very excited to be in this new building. It's, it's a big step forward for the whole town of Waxaw, and I think it'll be a source of pride for everybody in the town as well, because I know we're all proud of it. So, I hope you all are proud of it, too. So, thank you. All righty, we'll go ahead and kick off this official Board of Commissioners meeting this November 12th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. Want to do that one? All right. For your convenience and for our convenience. Exactly. A one, a two, a one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, please be seated. First of all, I'd just like to request any adjustments or amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? No amendments to the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is so adopted. Next up, we have general public comment. You will have three minutes to speak. Keep your comments directed at the board as a whole and not an individual, and do remember you are on the air, so keep it civil. Next up, we have a Stephanie Tribado. Stephanie Tribado, you're first.
Okay. Well, you're, it's Tribado.
Tribado.
Cool. Hey, just stand up here.
I don't know what that is. I mean.
Um, good evening, Mayor and business commissioners in our town and house, this is Biddwell Building. Happy to be here for our first official meeting. Um, I'm not sure if you recall, but I spoke with the last Board of Commissioners meeting in the Carrington community, and again, I ask people to raise again, the neighborhood, to show who's here, um, to listen in and share their comments. Um, first, we'd like to say thank you to the development company. They seem to have been listening to our concerns and keeping humanness and changes to their plan to accommodate for our neighborhood, and we really do appreciate that, and we do see that. Um, again, just want to make a point of, this is our community. Obviously, we'd love to keep the floors right beside us, but we do understand the development is here. We just hope that any decisions you guys make regarding this development and all other developments going forward for Waxaw are taken into account, what is the best interest, not just for our neighborhood, but for everybody who is here. I did have one concern that was just, sorry, one concern that came up. Um, I just found out about today regarding the Michaels organization. I know there's some, um, legal issues they've had in the past with some of the military housing that, uh, that they manage, and I just want to make sure that, um, going forward, that they have taken care of those issues. Um, there were some lawsuits and some concerns regarding the habitation or unhavitable, um, homes for some of our military personnel, and I just want to make sure that's not something that is ongoing, and that, um, building, you know, residents or businesses next to us, that they will be able to maintain and manage it to the expectations as we have for our town of Waxaw. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Maria Richardson.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Murray. My name is Maria Richardson, and I live at 2904 Bidwell Avenue in Carrington. First, I also want to extend a sincere thank you to the developers for hearing our concerns and revising their plan to include no vehicular or pedestrian access between their development and in our neighborhood. We appreciate their willingness to listen to resident feedback and adjust accordingly. This change will go a long way toward preserving the character and safety of our community. I'd also like to take this opportunity to remind us all of the analogy I mentioned at the previous public hearing. Our town needs both broccoli and cake. We're growing quickly, and while cake, i.e. residential growth, is tempting, our town must prioritize smart, balanced development that doesn't just add more housing, but also creates a sustainable tax base and enhances the quality of life for all residents. Waxaw's taxpayers are feeling the impact of heavy residential growth, and we need to ensure that each new development helps to alleviate, not to increase, that burden. Because there's already plenty of cake currently approved, maybe you need to push pause on more of that and focus on attracting a variety of other vegetables, broccoli, carrots, and even some spinach, to keep Waxaw's growth balanced and healthy. A mix like this would mean adding the kinds of businesses and employment centers and amenities that our town truly needs and wants. Finally, as Waxaw attracts more interest from developers, I hope the town will thoroughly vet any who seek to build here, ensuring that they and their employees operate with integrity. The people of Waxaw deserve responsible, honest partnerships with developers who are here to add to our community's success, not cut corners or make changes that don't ally with what was promised. Thank you again for your consideration of all of our requests that we've brought forward. We're optimistic about the future of Waxaw as long as we can keep a healthy balance in our growth. Thank you.
Next up, we have Adana Smith.
Three minutes. I know, three minutes. All right, I'm going to say thank you very much for your time and dedication to our town. I did send an email earlier to you about my concerns for the codes of the town of Waxaw that they are not compliant with. I do live on Colleroy, and my property abuts next to the proposed conditioning rezoning property. Um, I did find the Adelina flow generation and comparing that to the, the TIA of the Waxaw Associates, um, it seems that they're only about 500, 500 trips different, and looking at that, comparing 190 apartments and 40,000 square feet to the 533 residential units plus a public park, 48 live units, and 125,000 square foot of commercial, it seems like there's a little bit of numbers off there, and you have 2, uh, 2,300 compared to 1,700 daily trips. Um, I did speak about the street connectivity that they do not have, and they are landlocked, and the only way that they are using that, um, able to get out of their property would be atriums, ro, private roadways. Um, they did say that they do have an agreement, and in our code book, we have shared parking agreement, that when two parcels of land and their parking lot intertwines, the town asks for a shared agreement that goes to the town administrator and to the town attorney. Why wasn't that asked for? Why didn't they ask for something of saying, you know what, here is our agreement, yes, we are signing this at a closing, but present it beforehand to know that, that is the only way that they have in and out of that, uh, out of their property. Um, it is a crucial, it is a crucial code that needs satisfaction in order for this rezoning to happen. Um, they are still not compliant with their parking spots, and on the north side of the property, they have garages. So, is those garages, are they going to require their tenants to be parking in them? Or can they use that as a storage and say, oh, you know what, I don't have to go to the two storage facilities down the block, I'm just going to use that as storage, and now that's taking up another parking spot that they can park outside and use that garage for, for, um, storage. Um, again, they also talked about that the town of Waxaw decreased the amount of parking spots because to 55 and older to other municipalities in the air, well, not even in the area. Um, a few of them, if you look into it, the municipalities, they have access to mass transit. We do not have ma, access to mass transit. Um, so the ta, the town staff made adjustment to the parking lot, taking that into consideration where we don't have that. Um, the town manager, he is no longer an employee of the town of Waxaw, and I think his suggestion to decrease the parking reg, regulation should be voided, and that some, it should be looked at again. And what standards are we being set for the future development if codes are being changed to satisfy the development park, uh, projects? Um, parking lots, EV, they're still, they don't have any spaces for EV, for electric vehicles?
Thank you.
Time?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. It's well considered. Okay, and that concludes public comments. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, agenda is approved, consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have recognitions. So, uh, first, I'd like to introduce our interim town manager. I will just let the community know this, he's a result of an exhaustive search. Um, a list of about eight or so candidates were provided to us to review and interview. After speaking with every single one of his references, I was able to get a very comforting feeling that we are now in very good hands in the interim. So, I would like to introduce our new interim town manager, Mr. Richard Hicks. Any kind words for the crowd, or?
Let me turn this on. It's a privilege to be, um, here. Um, I've got probably over 40 years of local government experience. Um, I retired as the town manager for the town of Farville for 22 years. We usually don't, you know, last that long as managers, but that, um, I was very fortunate to be there. Um, in the last 15 years, um, I have probably done about a dozen of these interim positions, some very easy, some very difficult. Um, but I do look forward to, um, working with the board, and I look forward to working with the citizens. My doors open while I'm here. If you got any questions or any concerns, you know, you are more than happy to, to stop by, and I'm sure we can solve all, um, time, but we'll do our best. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Richard. So, can I get a motion to appoint Richard Hicks as the interim town manager?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this motion carries. Welcome, Richard. I certainly look forward to learning more from you as well, and now I think we'll go ahead and administer the oath of office.
Left hand. Yes. And then, um, state your name.
Just read it.
State your name. Aye.
Aye, Richard Hicks.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support, maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as interim town manager.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as interim town manager.
Of the town of Waxaw, so help me God.
Of the town of Waxaw, so help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have some old business, uh, topic of discussion this evening. Uh, Mr. Blair Israel, something to do with atrium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. All right, so this is going to be something that many of you have already heard and seen, so I'll just fly through a couple of quick, uh, review slides. Uh, won't spend much time with them, but I do have, um, some slides that I do want to talk about. Um, so here you can see the petition, petition number, uh, the atrium mixed-use, uh, development from Waxaw Associates. You can see its location there. I'll point out, um, you know, Highway 16, the atrium hospital, Carrington neighborhood, various commercials, Adelina, and so that is its location, and that location is currently zoned employment center, as is the atrium hospital, and some of the land north, you can see the other zoning adjacent. And in the Waxaw 2040 comprehensive plan, it was also designated as employment center, uh, and you can see what employment center is all about there. And in our land development code, there's a, uh, section 4.1.8 that goes into detail about what employment center is, and points out that, um, if, um, if it was developed by right, it could just be developed with those various uses that are, that are listed there, primary uses. But, uh, if it's going to include any, any residential, we'll see this here, uh, conditional rezoning is required, and conditional rezoning is site-specific. So, as you can see there, any major design changes require revised submittal and review proceeding, but tonight we'll just be looking at the plan that was, um, previously submitted with just some minor, minor changes. Um, but the point is, is that a conditional zone is, is a change to the map, of the zoning map, and also is site-specific, so there's a specific plan for it, which you can see here, and specific site conditions. So, I just want to point out, I'll go into a little detail on this, on this slide. So, with the conditional rezoning, those conditions include the following, you can see five bullet points there. Um, and of course, this is, this is in addition to all the conditions that, that the land development code would apply in general for, for this zone, but these are specific site conditions for this project. So, up to 190 age-restricted multifamily dwelling units, no more than 40,000 square feet of office space, and as far as age-restricted, the way it's been defined is that at least one resident per unit shall be 55 or older. There are other parts of that definition, too, but that's the, that's the main requirement. The site itself will be subdivided from the full parcel, and what you're looking there in that plan, looking at there in the plan is just the, the south end, there's the, of course, the helipad there and the hospital over there. Um, but as far as access goes, uh, vehicular and pedestrian access to the site will be provided from Providence Road and Gray Byrum through the cross-access easements. Additional access easements, um, shall be provided, you can see here to the Blue Jay property, if and when that is developed. Uh, and of course, the one that somebody here are concerned about is, is the Bidwell connection, which no longer exists, there's no street sidewalk or trail connection to Carrington. The only thing that remains is a, is a 15-foot, uh, easement that, um, but there would be no improvements. And really, the only use for that is so that, well, I mean, the, the requirement for that has to do with this publicly accessible recreation area, or just publicly accessible open space, I should say. And so what that means is that in these woods here, they would not be allowed to put up a no trespassing sign or a wall or something that keeps people out if they want to tromp through the woods and, and go there. But other than that, that's all it is, it's a 15-foot access easement. Um, there's also the, the tree buffer, and that's guaranteed here in the site conditions, it's 50 feet, 50-foot wide minimum. Um, and that's per LDC requirements, but they stated it explicitly. And then, the building footprint shall be no closer, you can see this line here, that's like the closest point to the property line, it's to be no closer than 220 feet from that, that west or rear property line. And then finally, as far as that publicly accessible open space, um, the, the minimum is requ, is, the minimum required would be a tenth of the site, so that comes to, the site is 14.8 acres, uh, so that comes to 1.48 acres. I just want to point out that this, that the rules on that for, in the LDC have changed, but they changed after this application was put in. Now there's, uh, you know, a one to, uh, 35 rule for the amount of open space, but they, they submitted before that. So, but it's still very ample open space for a project like this, and, uh, they'll, the applicant can go in more, to more detail if needed, but what this open space, the, the great thing about this open space is even though it is around an existing detention pond, it will, the, the, the land development code does require, uh, certain amenities to be put in, the trail seating, the applicant can go into more detail about what would be there, but it is a, it provides a great walk for the residents, obviously. Um, so it's, um, it, it, but it also can serve the greater community. So, um, as was mentioned, traffic, or as we know, traffic impact analyses were done, not just one, but two in this case, one that considered a bidwell connection and then one without, obviously, we're without this time, but both showed no off-site mitigation needed. Uh, we went into lots of detail on that in the previous meeting. So, parking has been brought up, parking ratio, and yes, there is a, a discrepancy between what our strict numbers would require, uh, and you can see the math there, ours, the LDC would, would require, without any change by the zoning administrator, it would require 433 spaces. The applicant was able to get up to 404, and what we, we had to take a hard look, and we've already, we've already known that our, our parking requirements in the land development code are very much on the strict side, and we've been wanting to make some changes to that, some slight changes, that would have it more in keeping with the comparable municipalities. Um, so, um, that's, you can see those comparable municipalities and what's required there. You can also see in the Institute of Transportation Engineers what is suggested there. So, with that information in mind, um, the, it, it was good judgment, I think, on the part of our, our, of current zoning administration to allow that number to pass, and, and we will be taking a closer look at making some text changes for our own parking, and that, of course, would be brought to you at some time in the future. Uh, so, the reasonable inconsistency statement that was prepared by staff, I'll just read it out loud here, the request, what we suggest, it doesn't have to be this, but what we suggest is the request is reasonable and in the public interest as the parcel was adjacent to other existing employment center properties and complementary uses along the major road corridor, that being 16, and it would provide a diversity to the tax base, which is very important, and has been underscored in this meeting already. And also that the project is consistent with the Waxaw 2040 comprehensive plan, uh, one example of that is that it furthers the development of employment centers. That's a, an explicit goal within the 2040 com plan. So, and it's also a goal that's in accordance with the 2020 collaborative growth strategy on which the land development code was written and the future land use map was put together. So, just the last slide here, these are the, uh, uh, motion suggestions. Um, if it could be approved as is, it could be approved with modifications, that means after some deliberation, if you decide there are additional conditions that you want to work out with the applicant. I know there was some discussion in between these meetings, um, so that can be a motion, or it could be a motion denied. So, that's the presentation I have for you, but certainly here to take questions, or go, uh, hand off to the applicant if you like.
Yeah, we'll go to questions from the board at this point. Does the board have any continuing questions on this project?
Um, yes, I just wanted to discuss.
They work.
Yeah, they work, really. Wow. Is that, yeah.
We're still getting the kinks out of.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, my concern is that in the employment center, residential needs to be well-established first, correct? If we're doing a conditional rezoning.
Did you mean to say residential needs to be well-established or commercial?
I mean, uh, commercial, I'm sorry. Needs to be well-established first.
That is how the land development code states it, yes, it needs to be well-established, it does not define what well-established means. I know that Mr. Wells made the argument that the established part of this, of the employment would be the hospital, that's how he looked at it. And then, of course, this development has some offices as part of that, but go ahead.
Well, I guess I would have to disagree with that assessment in that this is a separate application. It's coming to us as a conditional rezoning, and the fact that we can put a condition to at least try to get the commercial simultaneous to the residential. Right now, our ratio is at 89-11. It's not sustainable. We can't continue on this path. And in meeting with our business development director last week, we talked about a thorough market analysis that the town did, and it pointed out that we're losing a lot of business because we just don't have it here. And so the data says that to regain only 10% of what we're missing, we need 100,000 square feet of commercial. And that's what this is. And I would argue it's inconsistent in that 16 is made for commercial. And so we keep giving and negotiating away our commercial for this high-density residential, and we'll never tip that ratio in the direction that we need. And if we look at, just in doing some slight research, a healthy ratio has been said to be 70-30. The county tax administrator, Van Harrell, said 65-35. Our former mayor, Ron Pappas, who no one can argue knew about development, said 80-20. We're nowhere near that. And if we keep sacrificing the land that we have, that in our 2020 plan, in our growth strategy, indicated that this should be for a commercial, I think we're losing out and we're being short-sighted for planning for the future. And that's not to say that it's, you know, in general, when you look at it, you know, myopically, yes, 55 and older, brings less traffic, that's what everyone says, but the peak times in Waxaw are not the peak times in many other places. I know I find myself sitting in traffic at noon, at different times, at 2:00, it's just because of our infrastructure right now. And so it's a matter of timing. And we also have to consider everything else that's coming, right? We have Adelina and that traffic, everything is right in that area. And so with 16 being widened and those Michigan laps, and how many people need to be serviced? And how public safety can be sacrificed if we can't get at least the number of police officers we need? I mean, a simple calculation, we need another 12 officers for what's coming. And that's assuming we don't lose anyone from retirement or anything else. So my concerns is that, you know, in our discussions, it didn't seem like the applicant felt like they could do the commercial simultaneously. And so I couldn't support this project based on that.
And how do we go about adding these conditions? Do we just sort of make a list and then a motion?
Let me go back to the current list of conditions, and the, so you're asking about the process of adding conditions to that. I think those would each be posed to the applicant, and there would need to be, you know, it's a mutual agreement, so there would need to be agreement on what those conditions are. Then they can make the changes to their plan, which can be a very quick process, they could just add it on there, because it may just be written material, not like a change to the whole site plan, although it could include that, but if it's just written material, it can just be done very quickly. Of course, the vote couldn't be tonight, I don't, well, no, it actually could, it could be a motion to approve with those conditions. So we would record those conditions, I mean, the meeting's being recorded, and you could say, okay, well, here's, you can list off, or just say what those conditions are within your motion, and then if anybody approves that, then the motion would be to approve it with those conditions.
Yeah, well, in the last regular meeting, I know that the applicant said they were in talks with people for medical offices, and if those have gone further, you know, are you willing to commit to simultaneously building the commercial with the residential?
Do you wish the applicant to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you, and congratulations on the new space. We have continued talks, we're talking to a major medical office developer, but it's not something that logistically we can commit to first. Essentially, the residential takes majority of the land, and they're able to carry the cost of doing the grading, the site work, even the improvements that allow the open space, so the residential carries the costs, it's basically what makes the medical office tracks attractive, more viable, and easier for someone to develop. And so unfortunately, we're just not in a position financially to be able to build the medical office first, but we feel very confident that they're going to come together.
Yeah, well, I certainly agree with what Sue said about the ratio, Commissioner Woodruff, I should say. You know, and I'll take the food analogy a little further, you know, when it comes to residential, we're like a morbidly obese diabetic who won't say no to cake. And then we're surprised when the cake sales team shows up all the time. So, you know, we already have this zoned as a commercial corridor, and I just don't see the benefit to putting more residential in the middle of this area that we've, in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, zoned for commercial. I wanted to ask about another condition, see if you're willing, because we do have a pedestrian plan, and I saw that around the Sunset Hill lights, there's sidewalks everywhere, but no crossing. Would you be willing to assist us with putting a crosswalk in there?
I'd like to talk to the development team for a minute about adding crosswalks. I think that would also be contingent upon NCDOT's support of striking that intersection ahead of their road widening, but if you'll give us a minute, I can speak to that, it's usually contingent upon NCDOT approval.
Okay.
Can we confer?
Sure.
Well, I don't want to leave you alone, so I'll come back up if you have any other questions that I can handle. But yeah, I mean, you make the point that this is currently Employment Center, which does include commercial, but it's more about, you know, getting an employment base. And so that's why adding housing of any type requires this conditional zoning process, requires what we're doing now, so we feel that that's a good system, you know, I mean, but if there was no housing, of course, they could develop by right. I believe that that subject's been brought up before, and just, you know, what would be the maximum amount that a developer might put in? And so, anyway, those things have come up, but anyway, if anybody has any questions.
I have an answer.
Oh, good.
Thank you for buying me some time. So I like to make sure that the engineers, landscape architects, and the development team is comfortable. We would be happy to put in pedestrian crosswalks at that intersection contingent upon NCDOT approval.
Okay, thank you. And I wanted to ask about another one. The six-foot privacy fencing around the nature trails, I mean, would you be willing to put some privacy fencing with evergreen screening for year-round privacy? And are you removing the existing retention pond fence and pushing it outward to include the trail?
So we intend to use this as a trail, we've mapped it out, and it's essentially a half-mile walk from the door of the residential down to the trail and looping around. We had not contemplated fencing the entire area, sometimes I hate the idea of tearing down trees in order to put the fence, but again, if you'll give me a second to confer, we can look at it.
Could I ask for a little more elaboration on that fence and what you would want to see in this situation?
Just six-foot privacy fencing around the nature trails, so that, just so that there's more privacy for the neighboring communities.
So for that purpose, are you saying it would run along the west side, which would be the bottom of that map, and along the south side, which would be the east side?
Yeah.
And of course, not between them and the development itself, but just along those two edges?
Yeah.
Would there be access to the public?
Well, would that conflict with the easement at all?
It might, but the easement's only 15 feet wide, and it's right at the end of the street, so if the fence didn't go right in front, there were that easement, if it didn't block the easement, then yeah, it wouldn't conflict.
Okay.
So this portion of the site is higher than what's about, so I was asking the question, is it higher, is it lower? Let's talk about what's there. The hospital actually planted some fairly large trees that are well-established along that border, so we're open to putting in a privacy fence along that edge, but we do want to clarify that there could be loss of large mature trees that are there today that could impact. And so oftentimes, it's sort of a balance of, does it make sense, are there sections or gaps? So we've written standards before where we walk the property line with the residents to see if there are sections that don't have that type of maturity, and maybe it's not one continuous fence, but we work with the community to identify the best location for it. Because I do think it's worth noting, it is conditional zoning, and with conditional zoning, you get certainty. And the certainty you get with this is, we know that we're going to be less traffic, and we know that we're going to be at least 220 feet away from the adjacent property line. And we think that's a pretty big benefit to the residents behind us, and we've appreciated the collaboration along the process, so we're happy to continue to collaborate.
So that's a commitment to collaborate with?
So the way I've written the condition before is that the petitioner will work in good faith with the adjacent property owners to identify a location for a six-foot privacy fence with the understanding that it may not be continuous due to existing large mature trees. And then it's a little bit of a balance between your town manager and staff to help oversee how that gets implemented.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to make some statements. I know when the three of us were on the board and wrote the LDC and did the initial zoning for this property of EC, it was important to us to not have a straight commercial right there because of the neighborhoods around the area, and a straight commercial could have been fast food, gas stations, that type of thing, and we wanted it to be some type of, something that was more appealing for the surrounding neighborhoods. I do know that we, because the hospital was existing, that was another reason to have the EC, and we did look at it as a, more of a larger plan. I also believe that this would actually pay a commercial property tax rate, so if that makes a difference as far as what is built first. So I think the thing that I'd like to see, I know we've worked, tried really hard to work with Curriton to get what would be, you know, most appealing to you, as far as, I know there's been some concessions removing the road connections, and it sounds like there's other ones that could be possible. And so I want to, for everyone to think about what could go there by right if this project wasn't there. I think it was mentioned earlier, there could be manufacturing, light industrial, warehousing, and if that could be built, would you rather have that than what this plan is? And we know it's Providence Road, and something's going to be built there, it's the most expensive property in Waxaw. I mean, I live off of Providence, as near as y'all do, I have a grocery store being built right across the street from me. So, and I had to vote for that. So I understand, you know, it's not what you want, but we all know that something's going to be built there because it is Providence Road, and is this the best-case scenario, the best type of project that could be there than what could be built by right? And so I just, that was just a point I wanted to make.
I just wanted to piggyback on that. I know that oftentimes, when we come to these decisions, we worry about what can be done by right and what can be done by right. But as a board, we have control over that, the uses. And I've heard time and again over the last four years that, yes, while we have spaces in Waxaw for industrial and all these things, our infrastructure doesn't support that. So perhaps, you know, looking at that zoning as something that we would have control of and not be so afraid of, you know, what's coming by right if it's not exactly what the town would need. And my concern is that because the ratio is at 89-11, it's just not sustainable without raising taxes or cutting services, and I can't support that.
Well, right now, our highest taxpayer in Waxaw is the Ardmore Apartments, so I don't think that, you know, it's not contributing to the tax base.
No, of course it's contributing, but the amount of people that come with Ardmore and other housing like this, it's not really a true commercial like a Lowe's where we're not providing services. We still have to provide, we still have to provide police, fire, you know, emergency services, and it becomes a question of how safe is our town if we're not more careful about what we're approving. And that's not to say that, you know, I visited their other location, it's very nice, but I don't know that this is not the right location and the right time.
And we can't just look at how much one thing is bringing in, right? If you were operating a business, you wouldn't say, woo-hoo, we've got $2 million of revenue, let's ignore the $3 million in costs, right? So...
Well, I think we would be having police and fire service, whether it's office buildings or residential anyways. This is a use that we currently do not have in Waxaw, we do not have an age-restricted housing like this. It's a housing segment that we have not captured yet, so it would be helpful and adds to diversity of our housing. I don't know if there would be even more traffic if this was an office building, would that contribute more traffic than senior housing? So...
Well, you know, as far as the police are concerned, an office building doesn't require services 24 hours a day, and I believe it's between 500 and 650 residents, you need to add another police officer. And the quick calculation of everything that's coming brings us to 12 officers. We don't have that now, and we have to find them, we have to train them, and we have to hope nobody retires.
So with conditions that you have stated that you would like to see met with yourself and Commissioner Don, and other conditions that have come from, you've got to excuse my voice, I'm not feeling very well tonight, and with other conditions that have come from the community, is that something, if the development team can go back and work through these conditions along with the commercial part of it, you know, and parking, that would then be a better consideration? Or is it something that's not, you're saying that you do not even want them to work through to try and see if they can meet?
I don't think they have any more time to work through things, do they? I mean, are we at the end of the schedule?
No, I think it can still be tabled to work through these things right now, or to work through trying to get the commercial in place, or the fencing with the community, or any other conditions that you would like to ask of the developer, development team or applicant right now while they're here, and to see what they come back with. And if they can't come back with anything that's going to be satisfactory to all parties or both parties at that time, then you can make your final decision as a no, but if they can meet those conditions, and if the community members are more satisfied with that ask, then make that determination at that time.
So just to summarize that question into one simple bullet point, is the question is, are there conditions that can be placed on this project that would gain your approval? Or is it DOA?
Well, my major concern is the commercial first, and I don't know that they can commit that, so, but I think that they should work it through as much as they can and put as many conditions as possible.
And Commissioner Don also had another ask with the fencing, and I think there was, was there one more ask up here?
For the pedestrian crossing Sunset Hill.
Pedestrian crossing, and if there are any other asks to add that to the list, and then at the next meeting, if we table this now, give them the option to come back, see if there are any more asks from the community residents who are here, and let that be known, and see if it can be worked through, and if not, then so be it. Do we need a motion to that effect?
For continuance?
For, to table, yeah, for continuance to, continuance, to, what is our next meeting date? Somebody tell me.
November 26.
Last Thanksgiving. Okay, great. Motion... Motion to table the conditional rezoning CD... Excuse me? I said continue?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, continue. Motion to continue the conditional rezoning CD 00005-2024, atrium Waxaw.
Next day, November 26.
To November 26, 2024.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion for continuance carries, so we will discuss this further on our next meeting at November 26. In that time, we will look through some of the conditions that we can place on this project and see if we can come to an agreement. So Blair, I think the council will continue to work with you on some of those conditions, and we'll make those clear. It sounds like we have a couple that have been discussed tonight, and then if there's any others, we'll look to get those added and communicate that with the developer.
All right, I look forward to it.
Thank you, Blair.
Blair, real quick before you leave, there was a comment from the community with respect to the shared parking agreement?
Yes.
And I'm, I couldn't recall the actual process, if that's something that happens ahead of time or later down the road, but if that's something maybe we want to look into as well.
Well, the agreement would be between two parties, obviously. It would be between the, the party representing the apartments and the party representing the offices, because that would, those would be the two parties sharing. From my understanding, there is no party yet for, to, to represent those, those future offices. So, but, and usually this would not, that, this kind of agreement would not take place until we're at the level of, of initial Platts, but there has to be two parties to, to have, to have that agreement.
But the goal would be to... Okay, so...
Sorry? Do you want to clarify that?
So typically, shared parking is when you have a use that's operated during the day and a different use that operates at night, so like a restaurant and office, it makes sense for them to share because they're not using necessarily at the same time. In this instance, I don't believe we're, we're not utilizing a shared parking agreement.
I think, I think the parking that was spoken of by the citizen resident here was the housing parking along with atrium, the health facility, Waxaw, what is that, the hospital?
The atrium hospital, yeah.
Right, right there. Not that? I thought that's what I understood you said. What was it?
Blue Jay, is that?
Oh, the adjacent property, the Blue Jay property?
The Blue Jay property?
I don't know.
I think there was confusion just about the term shared parking. It seems like we're doing a shared parking agreement, but we've structured it so that we have enough parking for the office to park on their own, and then we followed the national standard provided by the traffic engineers who do this for a living. Other, I'm not credentialed to determine what the parking level needs to be, but we've relied on national standards and Brady Finkley, the town engineer, for traffic substantiated, that was current parking levels. But there's not a shared parking agreement. But if there was, we'd do it in future.
Can I just ask that Ms. Donna Smith, who's emailed, no, not to come, not to come, but to share your information with the applicant that you shared with her? Yes. Share that, with that information and what you were saying in there with the applicant. Okay? Can you do that?
Yeah, just add that to the email you already sent.
And send it to Bridget.
All right.
All righty, well, that sounds good. Very constructive, so thank you, and thanks to the builders for working with us on this project. We appreciate your consideration and your willingness to work with the community. Thank you. Okay, what page am I on? There it is. Next up, we have new business. Mr., or we have a Ms. Robin Vera. We're going to talk about the application for the endorsement of a grant for the Carolina Thread Trail. Ms. Robin?
Hello, I'm Robin Byer, Parks and Rec Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the Carolina Thread Trail Grant. And I have to work all the fun buttons while I'm talking, so. Just for the reminder of what the Carolina Thread Trail Grant is, it's actually a organization that's a community leader that collaborates and connects with over 88 local governments to connect trails and greenways in our region. And their grant, basically program, used to be an annual, but now it's on a rolling schedule. They have several different options to apply for. We're going to be applying, hopefully, for a trail construction. So the project location of what we're looking to apply for is the connection from existing Millbridge Neighborhood Greenway, just north of the Creekview Drive. So it extends, it's kind of like, right now, a deer path. It already is kind of there, people are unofficially using it, but we're trying to make it official. But basically, it would connect northeast through east, through the 12-mile creek kind of area, and connect to the southeast corner of Town Creek Park, where we would link that to our connecting paved asphalt at Town Creek Park, and that way we would get all the way through Town Creek Park. The length of the project is approximately 0.6 miles of trail. This trail is actually Segment IV of the feasibility study that you're going to hear here shortly. And this area is actually a local floodplain area, so we've already mapped out what materials would be best for this area, and that's what would be applied for. The total project cost is estimated to be $200,000. We have estimates for this already with proposals, and we are asking for $125,000 in this grant funding. The reason why we didn't ask for the full amount, they don't have a max amount, but at the same time, we looked at award amounts, and we felt like this amount was a good application amount. And then, basically, the balance of the project, we'd be asking for $75,000 to be committed from our pedestrian connectivity fund budget, greenway expense, we already have that budgeted, so that would be covered within that budget. Just to kind of also mention that this one particular trail segment is actually ranked number one out of all of our different surveys that we've had for our master plans. This, throughout all of our different surveys, rates number one on those priority scores. So it's very much wanted, we've gotten feedback from our citizens, and this would be a great connection. Also to mention that if we do get this connection, that we would basically go from Suspension Bridge Trail all the way through Millbridge, connect through to Town Creek Park, cross over to Prescott, then we'd get over to Prescott Commercial, we'd get that other grant. So we would basically get from South, North and South Carolina line all the way over to Highway 16. So it'd be an amazing project for us. So basically, the grant application, I've put myself a deadline for November 30. There's not any deadline to it, since it's a rolling schedule, but I'm going to try to get this in by the end of this month. We should hear early November, early 2025 on if we get this. If we are awarded, then we have two years to complete the project. And any questions, then I'd be looking for a motion.
Questions from the board?
Just a quick question with Millbridge. Were you able to get an eas, did you have to get an easement from them? Is that done?
We do have that easement, so that is already, that's been talked through, so yes.
Any other questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve or adopt Resolution RES 2024-021?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-021 endorsing the town of Waxaw's application for the 2024 Carolina Thread Trail Implementation Grant in the amount of $125,000, and authorize the funding allocation of $75,000 from the pedestrian connectivity fund account to complete the project.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, Robin.
Thank you very much.
Yay!
Next up, we have Ms. Dina Sabinski.
Anne Frand.
Anne Frand. Come back, Robin Byer.
I'm Dina Sabinski, your Park and Rec Director. I also have backup with Ms. Robin and Ms. Susan, and I'm going to introduce Ms. Elise and Mr. Hart that will give the presentation for tonight about our wonderful feasibility plan for the, for this corridor, which you've already seen quite a few times already, one with the bridge grant application we did last time, and then with the application with tonight for the, the grant through the woods. So what I would love just to give you an overview of, this has been a year in the making. Lots of work behind the scenes have gone into this plan, lots of data is in this plan to help us make good decisions in the future and CIP project decisions in the future. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all the players. A lot of Park and Rec Crew, a lot of Venech and DOT really came together to make this happen for us. This is a, this is another puzzle piece that we needed to accomplish to make cool things happen. So with that being said, I'm going to call up Hart and Elise, and they're going to show you an awesome presentation about our 12-mile greenway study.
So not to bore y'all with the details too much, but you're aware that the town of Waxaw applied for a grant, received a grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation's Integrated Mobility Division. And we started the study back in July of 2023, and we contracted with Venech to lead the study. They're one of our own call consultants, and the, the vision here for not only our Integrated Mobility Division for the state, but also for Waxaw is to establish safe and convenient greenway systems. From our perspective and CGOT's perspective, we're looking at the statewide greenway network, and we want to kind of fill in that gap. And then there's also the local need to fill in y'all's local greenway system. So we found a lot of people, a lot of municipalities had these lines on maps that were good ideas, but then when they looked for funding and went after grants and stuff, they didn't have that missing middle piece for that feasibility study with more costs and more refined estimates and, and looking at prioritization of segments and stuff. So that's kind of why we created this feasibility study program. So just wanted to kick us off with that and head over to Elise and all friends.
Thanks, Hart. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Commission, for having us. So when we set out upon this feasibility study for the town of Waxaw for the 12-mile creek greenway, we established a steering committee to help us to, to provide input and to help guide the study. The steering committee included various stakeholders from Union County, from the town of Waxaw, residents, business owners, and some amazing town staff. This steering committee met periodically to receive project updates. They offered guidance on project direction, helped to prioritize the, the segments for implementation, helped provide technical expertise where appropriate, and helped us to review our materials as the study came together. Our study, oop, excuse me, our study looked at existing conditions in the area. We looked at challenges along the corridor, such as steep terrain in areas, floodplains in others, areas where existing neighborhood greenways needed to be connected one to the other, and key crossings, both of waterways and roadways. We also came up with cost estimates, as Dina and Hart talked about, to be able to help set the town up for successful implementation into the future. So I know the, the Commission has seen this corridor, so I'll go pretty quickly through, through the, the east, or west to east of the corridor, but starting at Segment One, we started the, the suspension bridge at the South Carolina State Line in our, our first section, which is unique in the entire corridor, which is the only natural area. It's not expected to be, or not anticipated to be paved, it's expected to remain natural. But we did include assumptions about path repair and maintenance, and also for the existing structures in that section. Continuing on, Segment Two connects to H.C. Nesbit Park, exist, which are exact, existing gravel and paved segments. Segment Three goes through the Millbridge Neighborhood on existing neighborhood greenway. Segments Four through Six consider, continue on through unpaved trails, additional neighborhood greenways sections that, and, and in this section, this is where we have some of our most key connections that need to be made, key crossings that need to be made to make that east-west connection. And Segment Seven to Ten brings us to the easternmost extent, going through the new Encore Development, incorporating a greenway that the development is putting in, and also the existing pathway on, in the Lawson subdivision, and ultimately ending at the Westley Chapel So I spoke about some of those key connections. These are crossings of both 12-mile creek and its tributaries, and also some of those key north-south roadways that the corridor will need to cross. So several bridges will be needed. Two of the major ones that we've looked at particularly for making that east-west connection were Bridge 6A, which you've heard a lot about, making that connection from the Prescott Neighborhood into the Prescott Commercial area, and also 7A, which crosses the creek getting into the Encore area. Those are kind of those, those key natural crossings that need to happen. Key roadway crossings include the Waxaw Marvin Bridge Crossing that crosses 12-mile creek that is slated to be replaced as part of an NCDOT project BP10RO17, and then also at Providence Road, NC16, which is part of the widening project for NC16 U5769B, in both of which cases, the town has coordinated with NCDOT to incorporate pedestrian infrastructure, and in the case of the Waxaw Marvin Bridge, a shelf underneath the bridge that would convey the trail. We also looked at connections that would bring in other pedestrian infrastructure, including future, future planned trails into Sunny Way, which is that north-south corridor. And we looked at, we added recommendations to pave the, the trails where possible, to add those pedestrian bridges and, and those crossings at key points. And I will pass it back to Hart.
So there are lots of benefits to trails and greenways, but just to highlight a few of those, first of all, the connectivity for Waxaw and the people of Waxaw, we're connecting different neighborhoods and stuff that wouldn't be connected by car, some of those easy short connections. I think about 35% of our everyday trips are two miles or less, so you know, as we talk about traffic and car congestion and stuff, if we create the infrastructure for people to be able to get to these short destinations and stuff, to schools, to the grocery stores, stuff like that, on infrastructure like greenways and trails, that can eliminate some of that congestion that we're thinking about here. And then there's a bunch of other different sidewalks and greenways and other infrastructure that it will connect to. And then, I think, you know, just making Waxaw more accessible for everybody, I think all the paved trail portions will be ADA accessible, and then the non-paved portions will most likely meet the Architectural Barriers Act standards, which it complies some with, there's some overlap there with that. So. And then the next steps. So the town of Waxaw has been great to work with, and it's really cool to see, even before the study has been adopted, to see the other grants and stuff are being applied for to try to implement this project. A lot of things we see, you know, sometimes things sit on the shelf and they just sit, but for this, you know, the next thing is several grant opportunities. There's the Great Trails State Grant, which is being administered through the State Parks and Recreation, that I think the town will present on later, and then the one that was just presented on for the Carolina Thread Trail. So, you know, all these are good ways to implement things and, you know, really kind of see where this feasibility study takes us. And then it'd also be competitive for federal funds, so there's several funds that I could probably name a bunch of acronyms for, but just name a few, there's like the carbon reduction and congestion mitigation and air quality programs that are administered through your plan organizations, and those, this study will help y'all compete for those grants as well that are 80% federal funded and 20% locally funded. So, you know, I think this is a, you're on the right path for this. I think that was, I'll open up to questions.
Any questions from the board on this? Any questions from the board on this? Nope. Seems like a very thorough study that's been done, so I think it's an easy decision. So can I get a motion to adopt the 12 Mile Creek Greenway Feasibility Study as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dina and team.
Yay, thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have leadership reports. We'll go ahead and kick it off with our new interim town manager, Richard Hicks.
Okay, it's green now. Tom, currently on day four. Tom, I was fortunate enough, last week I spent three full days with Jeff, and I think I got a good understanding of what the town needs to be working on, what your future projects are. So I hope I can help y'all keep moving things forward so we don't lose time. My first meeting this morning was with, I don't know his name, Brian Matthews, the manager for Union County. I spent about an hour with him, and I'll report on that later as we get into, you know, Tom, into more details. Tom, I think you have a very talented staff. I think they are eager to learn. Tom, I think they want to make things happen that the board wants to move forward, so I look forward to working with the staff as well as the board as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We definitely have a passionate staff that we all love, so thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Dina Sabinski. I think we've got a couple of events coming up in the next few days.
We have a few. So this Friday is Charters of Freedom. It is actually right outside where our, that, you could actually see them are, they're already lit up. That is at Friday, the 15th at 10:00 a.m., and that again, is this Friday. Everyone is welcome. The following weekend, the 23rd, we start the day off with the Ginger Snap Girls in the Run 5K Race, starting at 8:00 a.m. So there's lots of activities in our downtown. They're going to start coming in at 5:00 a.m., setting up, and then we'll have Waxaw Marvin closed down for about an hour and 45 minutes while the race is happening, and then we'll open everything back up and it'll look like nothing happened. And then we're going to move into, we're going to trans, um, transition into Touch a Truck and the Tree Lighting at 3. The tree delighting and Touch a Truck is going to be in the new downtown park. And then we also have ADA parking in there and special guest parking, and then always plenty of parking in our downtown, so we look to Ford seeing you there. At the, when the tree lighting happens at 6, it also is going to light up all the lights in the downtown, so it's going to look very magical, which I always love that time of year. At your spots, um, we have upcoming events that gets you all the way to the end of the year. Please check out the town website, the Facebook pages for both Parking Rec and the town. We'll give you all the ins and outs and timelines and agendas for all the events that are coming up. And also with the Ginger Snap, citizens will get a code red prior. Just a final reminder that it's coming up and the Waxaw Marvin will be closed for a little bit, and we're all set. Any questions?
Do you have details on the, the areas of closure on Waxaw Marvin?
Yes, so they will be closed from, it's going to go all the way up to 16 and West North Main, right in front of the Community Corner, all the way down to Pine Oak. It's going to be closed for that hour and 45 minute-ish. As the runners come back, we start opening up as we go. We have great assistance with PD and Fire and EMS are with us the whole time. And of course, your Parking Rec team is out there with them. And then we'll, we'll work on opening as much as we can as we close in the event. You'll see lots of people in pink vest. There's a lot of the volunteers. They're going to be at all the road connections on Waxaw Marvin as well to make sure we don't have anybody accidentally driving into the race, because that's, you know, safety first. So we have all that safety protocol.
And you said that closure is starting around 5:00 a.m.?
The, the setup starts at 5:00 a.m. The road closure won't be until closer to 7:45.
Okay.
Right before the race hits.
About 7:45 till it's done?
Until it's over with.
Okay. And are the girls running to Middle James or?
Sir?
Which direction are they going?
They're running, sorry. They're running from right in front of the knit shop, Tangles, uh, to Pine Oak. And then that, that's the start and finish.
Perfect.
So they, they, they flip each other.
Gotcha, up and back. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board?
Right.
All righty.
We're seeing y'all there.
Thank you very much, Dina. I look forward to that. Sounds like an exciting weekend. Next up, Mr. Todd Matthews.
Thank you. How are y'all doing?
Good so far.
Been kind of busy. We're working, uh, put the wall back together for Charter of Freedom. We had to take the bike out to get it wired, but we got that wired today, so we don't put the brick back tomorrow, get ready for the ribbon cutting.
That looks good out there.
We've been helping with the Christmas decorations. Started leaf season, our leaf pickup last week. We own 44 loads right now, so I think we don't want to break our record from last year. It goes to January 31st. We've been replacing some trees in Millbridge. We've replaced 24. There may be 80 or 90 more to go to get them replaced, just in the planting strips. I've been grinding sidewalks. We did over 45 so far, so people don't trip over them. We had to replace 133 panels with rebar and cure them on Sunset Hill because it was so bad. There was no way to grind. We done ground on some major, there was nothing left. So we replaced all those last week. We put in new sidewalks from the 75 to the Mule Barn and added two parking spaces, and that turned out real well. Right around the Mule Barn entrance, there's horseshoes in the sidewalk, so when you see that, I know a lot of this stuff around here gets kind of tense, but there's a funny story while the horseshoes are there. Mark that owns it, his grandpa had it before him. So when my grandpa came home from World War I, he bought a mule from Mark's grandpa. When my dad and Uncle Herman walked it from Waxaw all the way to Weddington, when the mule died, so I told Mark he owed me $11.75. So he put the horseshoes in there just to remind me that he's not paying me. But it, it worked out good. We get a kick out of it every time he opens a business in there, we talk about it, so. But as far as this building, this is something that's well needed.
You guys getting settled in the public service space?
Yeah, public service. Been here 23 years, and if they weren't, people would like to come and see what we've worked in now and what we're getting ready to move to, we'd be glad to show them. But this is, it's awesome. Especially being a citizen for 65 years here, it's pretty cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Any further comments from the commissioners?
Tom, Mayor, I've got one more thing if you want.
Go for it.
Tom, allow me. If you would stand up, Ashley, come to the microphone and introduce you. Tom, so Ashley works for InFocus, who is assisting with our planning and zoning, so you'll see her sitting out there sometimes probably, so I'll let you introduce you.
I am a hybrid of a planning engineer. I didn't know I was getting introduced. I was hiding in the back. My boss was calling me, and I was like, I'm still at work! I'm very excited to be here. I actually live up in the Davidson area, so I, my commute is wild. Not as bad as Mr. Hicks, but it's, Waxaw is such a special little place. I'm bringing my family to the tree lighting ceremony, so my son's 11, and he's really excited about it. He still believes in Santa Claus, so. So thank you for having me. I'm very excited to work with you all.
Well, thank you for your help and your support. All righty, anything else? Go once, go twice, three times. Can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.